Good evening. Welcome to the great hall here in the City Hall. Today is Tuesday, September 5th, and we are here for our first scheduled council meeting of the fall. So welcome back, everybody. Summer hiatus, but I know it was a hiatus. We'll be working tomorrow about the city. So thanks very much. We'll enjoy it. Madam President, please.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Crowe.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Finn. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Calhoun.
Present.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members, your former.
Great, thank you very much. If you'll all stand, please, join me in a moment of silence. I just want to remember those victims in Houston and Texas suffering because of the flooding and the storm and, you know, think about those we might know or those we don't know and certainly wish for their continued prayers and their help and support for them. The term facing the flag, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just for all." Thank you, Madam President. We will be opening the meeting.
Pursuant to the open meeting, all parties personally may make an audio or video recording of the public meeting or the current meeting through any means. Attendees are therefore advised to protect recordings or transmissions being made whether perceived or unperceived by those persons and that need to acknowledge it is my fault.
Great, thank you. And if you will read your question that I'm not part of?
Number one on the agenda is 2017-132, appropriation for $12,836,000 for public building commands and computers, software upgrades.
Okay. Now, Counselor Crowe.
Good evening, Madam President. Just like the motion to place that in committee for a meeting to be scheduled later on this evening.
All right, that would go to committee, to finance. Next, item number?
Number two on the agenda, 2017-133, appropriation for $7,100,000 for new animal shelter.
Similar fashion, the motion to place that in finance.
All right, how would we? For the finance committee?
On the motion?
Yes, Counselor.
Perhaps to you, to the mayor's representative. We were going to look into, we, the city, was going to look into the access from that one. Do you have an update on that or will there be an update before we get this? You don't have to tell us now, I guess, but I will be looking for the answer to that. And it kind of spoiled what I heard that they were saying that perhaps there isn't that right. I would just encourage the administration to hold the tapes of the PUD meeting because it's my recollection that it was discussed as part of their presentation in the discussion with the council in public function at that time, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Calhoun. Madam President, next item.
Number three on the agenda, 2017-134, appropriation for $2,700,000 for the acquisition of St. Mary's School.
Counselor.
Go to finance, Madam President.
All right, motion to finance, that would place the finance committee.
Next is number four on the agenda, 2017-135, appropriation for $2,300,000 to traffic, bicycle, pocket, and pedestrian safety master plan in traffic improvements.
All right.
Similar fashion, motion to finance and just for the committee because I know it's been obviously a break since we've since we've talked about this, I had asked the order to recirculate the information that was provided to us back around early April. And I would encourage counselors that if you have additional information requests leading up to the scheduled meeting, which I think is later on this evening, you know, please make those requests. Thank you, and the order for her help, motion to refer that to finance.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, great, the motion's on.
Number five on the agenda, 2017-136, appropriation for $128,030 for Mayor's drug test force.
Counselor Crowe.
Motion to move that to finance.
All right, motion to finance, all those in favor? Motion to place it finance.
Number six on the agenda.
Objection.
Okay. Counselor Harris. All right, objection to item number six on the agenda of the Department of Home Works Administrator, the organization. So that would be placed on the agenda for the next meeting.
Number seven on the agenda, 2017-138, in order of homeworld petition, John Patrick Ryan. Let the city council, the city of Quincy petition general for pursuant applause, one, section eight.
Motion to read, place it, Counselor Forrest. I believe the mayor's representative relates to the record next this time to speak on this as a better way, Counselor Vaughn? Okay, thank you.
Just reading, Madam President. This is the body, those members of the body who weren't here in 2014 was originally approved. This is essentially a refilement. Hold me up. I'm sorry. This is essentially a refilement of a homeworld petition that was filed and approved by this body, a nothing vote in 2014. Unfortunately, the clock of the state house ran out, so it needs to be refiled. As many of you know, Sergeant John Ryan was injured in the line of duty and determined to be fully disabled. There was a time, as per civil service rules, where a son or a daughter of a police officer is in the line of duty would get automatic status on civil service. That has changed and it requires homeworld to make that happen, and that's the case we are, the case we're in right now. And again, this was approved by this body in 2014, and it's our hope that we can get this back up to the state house efficiently, so we can do the whole update.
Okay. Can I ask a question? I know Counselor Corr, but if I could ask a question, so it's a state body, I should do this, right?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no ordinance or anything that we could pass that would change that?
No, it's a civil service rule, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to comment on Sergeant John Ryan and his family's commitment to public service here in the city of Quincy. There's a lot of families that we have that have multi-generations of service and have great pride and commitment to our community. The Ryan family is one of those strong families, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the order this evening.
Motion by Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Calhoun. Motion, Counselor Calhoun.
Yes, if I may, I just kind of echo the sentiment that you were hinting at, Counselor President, that the fact that we have to hold on this is kind of absurd, to me anyways. As Chris had said, this used to be something I was kind of quote-unquote with civil service. If you were disabled in the line of duty, your children got moved off the list, preferential treatment for that same service and the same thing. The fact that we have to do this on a one-off basis, I would, I made the same, the question that you asked, I had asked the administration earlier today, can't we just pass an ordinance that says this applies to everyone, not just the Ryan family? Shouldn't this be a rule that we say, Quincy, if you are the child of a disabled member of one of our first, one of our earliest, that you automatically get that? And as told, we can't, we have to do it by homeworld petition on each and every case. This is an easy, you know, this is an easy, no-brainer for me, I think, probably for anyone else, too. You know, it's an opportunity for us to show that we, you know, stand up and have the backs of those first responders who on a daily basis stand up for us and have our backs and everything we do, so, you know, this is an easy vote. I would just echo the sentiment that Counselor Forrest had shared about the Ryan family specifically, but as it relates to a whole class of individuals that are suggesting this anytime it comes up. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Counselor Calhoun. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, it's a motion made by Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Calhoun. Motion, Madam President.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Take your address. Number eight on the agenda, 2017-139, ordinance regulating sober homes. Be it a day in the city.
Motion, Counselor. Motion, Madam President, Counselor O'Leary. Yes, okay, motion, read the reading. Counselor Calhoun.
Thank you. Actually, Counselor Forrest is the co-sponsor of this, to make sure that our name is added to. This measure is, unfortunately, the result of the situation is really just kind of, at least in my word, I don't know what other court counselors are dealing with, but it's kind of spiraled out of control. I think we all know and have known for a long time, when this business of governing, that you can't regulate sober homes. In the past approximately five months, five sober homes have sprung up in Ward 4, predominantly in residential neighborhoods. We have one particular one that showed up on a, essentially, was potentially a cul-de-sac, a dead-end street in the middle of a neighborhood. As you can imagine, this has caused quite a lot of concern for residents that, one, the way in which these things come out, come out of nowhere. There's no registration with the city, there's no licensing process with the city, there's no regulations with the city that governs how these sober homes can be operated, where they can be located. And what's really kind of frightening to me is that there's nothing federally, there's no federal regulations or state regulations that govern how a sober house can be run, managed, operated, or located. What we have here is, lack of a better word, it's a loophole. There's a loophole in the law, you have some federal legislation and some case law deciding that federal, pining on that federal legislation, that is created a loophole in which sober houses currently exist. And as the need for reliable places to send loved ones and family members and folks you care about to get help and insurance is coming more and more, I fear that we're going to have even more of these facilities open up and be opened, and that's okay, but be opened by folks that we don't know who they are, we don't know what their background is, and they're not really in the business of providing a sober home for folks to live. They're in the business of collecting checks for providing a sober home. And I think as a municipality, this is something we need to avoid. This regulation, and again, I fully expect it, worked with Solicitor Timmons in the mayor's office, we fully expect that this will be challenged legally if this matter passes, but what this legislation seeks to do is essentially draw a line in the sand that says here in Quincy, may not exist anywhere else across the country, but here in Quincy, we're going to do two things. We're going to protect the quality of life in our residential neighborhoods from having a business just pop up out of nowhere without any notice to anyone, without any notice of what regulations says to who's there, who's running it. And we're also going to, the second thing is, we're also going to protect the vulnerable folks who are coming out of detox, who need a sober place to live, a clean, safe, sober place to live where they can get resources for their recovery. That's what this legislation does. It serves those two very important purposes. Protect the folks who live in sober homes and who are serviced by sober homes, and protect the quality of life in our neighborhoods and make sure we know who the operators of these sober homes are. So I would ask that this be referred to committee and then later on to oversight committee. Later on tonight, I'm going to probably schedule a meeting of the oversight committee in which we will take testimony. I would like to fast-track this. As I said, we're operating at an average of, these things are springing up, on an average of one per month in Ward 4. This is something we need to get a handle on. I think residents expect us to. Certainly, the meetings, conversations that I've had with everybody, they're shocked that we can't do more than what we're doing. And I think up until now, it's been a standard operating procedure of every municipality to simply say our hands are tied on this. While I do think our hands are tied, I think we shouldn't try untied by putting in some reasonable regulation. So I'd ask that this matter be referred to, I guess, oversight committee and ordinance, and I'd ask that it be advertised at the first available time of use.
All right, so refer the matter to ordinance and oversight committee as well. And just to echo those sentiments, Counselor Calhoun, I would have to get the sponsors because I do think that this is something important and it's not cast as far as some people who want to get help, who want to get better and for treatment, I believe that obviously, juggling out addiction are a, an enormous problem that leads our community as well as other communities across the Commonwealth. And when we have these sober homes that don't do a good job, that don't provide care adequately, that don't maintain a good atmosphere for folks to get better and for a place, a safe place for the neighborhood, then it's really something that casts out on the whole, on the whole community and that's something that we need to be more open to, not more afraid of, not more closed off. So regulating those sober homes is something that we don't do currently at the state and federal level and it's something that I know other communities, even I talked about this in other states, other places across the nation, have done similar things to attempt to get this under control. And so I'm happy to work on this as well with the solicitor and with the community to make sure that people feel safe and adequate and people have a good, adequate environment to recover from an addiction which clearly doesn't just affect those who are afflicted with it for their families, but really the whole community. So we will refer the matter to ordinance and.
If I could add that, sure, I, I have publicly supported sober homes in Ward 4 and in elsewhere in the city previously, and the ones that I've supported went through a community process where there was notification before it opened up. The ones that are really diminishing the quality of a residential neighborhood, the ones where I'm getting a phone call and say, Brian, what's going on at such-and-such address? And I say, I don't know, what do you mean? And they say, oh, I don't, this contractor's over there, they told me they're opening up a sober house at the end of the week. And then all of a sudden, there's 14 people living in what used to be a single-family house. That's a problem. We don't know who the operators are, so it's not, certainly not my intention to cast aspersions on the folks receiving services or the folks even opening up the sober homes. It's, there has to be a more robust community process, there has to be involvement from the city, notification. There has to be a time period for residents to be able to ask questions and learn about, residents who are going to be living in the community here, ask questions and learn about who the operators are and how they're going to run their facility. We need probably 20, 30 more of these in the city of Quincy. And I would gladly, if a sober operator called me up and said, I'd like to run up a sober house in Ward 4, I'd say, great, let's find you a place that makes sense, let's, I'll work with you. But the folks who decide to just open up in the middle of a residential, single-family residential neighborhood without notice in the city, without conversation with any neighbors or anybody, that's something I think we need to be architected to. So, thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Counselor King.
Just two quick questions. By definition, and I don't know what answers, is a sober house also a halfway house?
Not that, um, these halfway houses, I, from what I understand, are different, but maybe, I know this requires a lot of licensing and maybe could shed some clarification on that.
All right. Thank you. The, we have group homes, we have lodging houses, but as far as the group homes go, everything is licensed through the licensing board. And I did get a chance to look at this today and I did speak with Mr. Timmons, and I agree with the definition and some of the rules set forth before you tonight that in fact there should be a process with the licensing board if not, I mean, they're calling for the city clerk to be the licensee, but perhaps it even goes far as the licensing board, that's where all lodging houses and multi-minister go through, the licensing board.
And then, so then it's enforced by inspection services?
Inspection services, by the department, health department.
Who would come up? Okay. All right, I just want to know under whose kind of jurisdiction this would be managed, for a pardon, you know, seemingly for inspection services department.
Thank you. Licensing also is at the public meetings of people, okay? Get up and speak.
Yes.
Provides folks if they want to ask questions, get answers, so. All right, thank you, Madam President.
Number nine on the agenda, 2017-140, be it a day in the city of Quincy, accept a call and give it upon the conditions attached thereof, various donors $3,000 to the D.A. program.
Yes.
Thank you, other?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, seconded by Counselor Harris. Okay, yeah, yes. Uh, on the motion, Madam President?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor King. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Madam President, if we could just go back to the ordinance, I don't believe it got voted into a committee, so there's a motion to put it into ordinance committee. Anyhow, Counselor?
Ordinance and oversight.
Oh, ordinance and oversight. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, yes, Madam President.
Next on the agenda is number 10, 2017-141, a gift of $510 from various donors to the D.A.
program. Similar fashion, move approval, and if we could, just right now, if the members would have chosen, awesome.
All right, motion for Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Vaughn. On the motion?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn, yes. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Next is number 12, 2017-143, a gift of $6,000 from the Portland Family Foundation, Inc., to the Quincy Animal Shelter.
Move approval.
Motion. All right, motion approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Vaughn. On the motion?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Next is number 12, 2017-143, a gift of $6,000 from the Portland Family Foundation, Inc., to the Quincy Animal Shelter.
Move approval.
Motion. All right, motion approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Forrest. On the motion, Madam President?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Be it a day in the city of Quincy, oh, excuse me. Number 13 on the agenda, 2017-144, a gift for $100 from the independent order of odd fellows to Quincy Police to crime revenge.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor King. On the motion, Madam President?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
Seven members. Next on the agenda is number 14, 2017-145, a resolve for the Hancock Park Baiting Resolution. Whereas closing the Hancock Municipal Lot also to be slated to begin.
All right, motion, Counselor Calhoun. Counselor Calhoun, motion. I mean, I mean, resolution?
Resolution, yes, this is a resolution, given the upcoming situation, closing the Hancock Municipal Lot, slated to begin, and the parking calamity that it's likely to cause affecting the businesses downtown, this is a resolution seeking the administration to work with the counsel, the passion and interest within the next 90 days, ordinance that creates a commercial property tax, a baiting program structure around the closure of the Hancock Municipal Lot. This is similar to community manager, I've been going to the sober house opens up in a residential neighborhood, I've been telling the residents who live next door to a bait, file for a baiting, their property, character, their property has changed. This is similar, we're going to, you have a commercial district where folks are going to circle the park, I can't imagine that there isn't going to be a negative impact on the businesses in the downtown, which is mostly problematic, first of all, problematic because those are the existing businesses that are already downtown, as well as the businesses that are on the front edge, beating the renaissance in downtown. So these are the businesses we want to make sure stay open during this transition period and then try after. So, I don't know, I would like to vote on it, folks don't want to vote on it, they want to put it in committee, I'm fine with that, too, but I don't, I think it's a reasonable resolution, ask the administration to look at it and come back with us, back with us and so on.
Okay, so it's a motion from Counselor Calhoun. Counselor King, did you want a second?
No.
Okay, motion. Does somebody want? Okay, do you want to put it?
No, I'm going to die for lack of a second.
I see, I'll give a second. Up.
I didn't, no, the motion's, motion's.
You meant to pass it.
Die for lack of a second.
Okay, all right. Next, second?
Number 15 on the agenda, 2017-146, a resolve, animal control department policies and procedures review. There, we resolved that Quincy City Council gave out a request to the administration to make report to the city council on the animal control department and its policies and procedures. We have further resolved that the administration.
Motion, Madam President, cancel the forest. Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. I have had, this has been an issue, we've heard it talk a lot in a long time, but I've fairly had another summer of animal control not responsive by constituents, and it's truly becoming embarrassing to me that they're not responsive, they're not responding to call, we're hearing issues, people probably need to follow up, and it's ironic, it's of course, in champion, the animal shelter project, we're talking about the animal shelter, the home for animal control, I expect any more out of the animal control department, I'm looking here for know what they do, how they don't function, how they don't grow, they're really, this is the form especially I have, because their fellow constituents are very frustrated for something that's a small service, they should, my constituents should, when they put a call in versus a service, should get a response, and I've had consistent conversations with the mayor's office, which is a softness, and it's disappointing, we need to have a focused discussion, I want my constituents to look for answers for what is their reason for not being responsive. They're not responsive, you know, it's what my expectation is, my constituents, we judge me, we judge animal control, I've had a lot of incidents that I have not handled, response, and just absolute lack of responsiveness. I'm a legislative manager, I'm a kind of policy, they need more accountability, they need to change command, let's have that discussion, we'll skittle that in maybe oversight committee, whatever else is involved.
Okay, so motion into oversight? Okay, by Counselor Forrest, seconded by Counselor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the I said?
Number 16 on the agenda, 2017-147, a resolve, an update with adoption of age-friendly planning model, whereas the city council, the city.
All right, motion, Madam President, read the motion.
Thank you, Madam President. This is just a follow-up discussion. Last summer, Counselor Liang and I did some, you know, some research and he dived into the age-friendly planning model, just put out there by AARP, and we had a pretty substantive discussion with the body here, it was just a year ago, as well as a presentation from Valerie Spain of AARP. I know that, you know, at the time. I know that, you know, at the time, the resolution is presently pushing in, it's supported by the body. And my understanding was that, you know, it was a concept that everyone was comfortable with, interested in moving forward on. And I think that, just to kind of take a step back, that, you know, this planning model is just designed to, you know, do what we're already doing and make it, you know, even that much better. I think we have a solid planning department, councilman aging, many other hands that touch the senior citizen constituency on a daily basis. I've found, you know, like I said, through this research of this particular model, that, you know, by entering into this plan, you're not only servicing the need for today, but you're really sort of building out a curriculum as, you know, the next five, ten, fifteen years sort of progressing. When you start to examine the amount of percentage of population that are going to be, you know, turning sixty-five years and older, you know, the numbers are absolutely staggering. So, this, not a matter of that, it will become a larger and larger issue for folks living in the city, from the, you know, the baby boom generation that are looking to, whether it's transition housing, stay in city downsize, or even just, you know, plug into more of a network type community setting. And or as we shape, continue to shape our ideals and developing city downtown, are we taking into account, you know, some of the amenities that would help, you know, the senior citizen populations? No question that I represent a very large senior citizen constituency. However, after, you know, spending some time reading through this and talking to the folks from A A R P, you know, it's zero cost to the taxpayer, it seems like it's just, it's more upside than anything. But what I'm curious of, perhaps Mr. Walker would have more perspective on this. But I believe in order to take a step forward, what needs to happen is, you know, the mayor of the city, mayor quote, sign a proclamation. Is there any thought on that?
Okay, Mr. Walker.
From you, Madam President. Yes, councillor Mayor, we support both of it. I look into exactly where it is in the process, sometimes you're going to have, okay, I mean, more work has been done today, but I don't think that there should be too much.
Right. I know there's a lot going on, and, you know, the other thing too, you know, I had a very long conversation with the mayor and the list and whatever of this. So, I just didn't want it to die, believed, you know, that there's much more upside to it than not. So, that's, hence the spirit of a resolution here, to see what's yourself. I do want to, Madam President, you could add a little case of baby brain.
Yeah.
I put this in right before the agenda being shaped up, councillor Leeang should have been co-sponsor on this resolution. So, if you wouldn't mind adding her on, that would be great. With that, Madam President, I would move it off.
All right, motion by councillor Crowe, seconded by councillor Leeang, on the motion. Okay, just a second. Councillor Harris on the motion? Okay. Okay, great. So, Madam President, you have a comment?
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor Lefarge.
Yes.
Councillor Leeang.
Yes.
Councillor Calmidge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. And number seventeen on the agenda, two thousand seventeen one four, a resolve for shopping card ordinance?
Yes. Motion agreed by councillor Harris. Councillor Harris.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for this, the ordinance committee. I have to tell you, I have to tell you, the, the city solicitor came in front of us. We couldn't vote on a particular, particular, brand new SEMA, I'm going to come right up and say it. And I had a constituent send me five photos, five days of shopping cards, when they told us that they were going to put the mechanism in to control the cards, just like the big Y. Yesterday, but it's not only SEMA, so I'm not just picking on that. The same goes for starting shop. Yesterday, I went up and councillor King, I'm sorry I mentioned the ward, went Fremont Street. There was two in the middle, there was two in the street. This is a problem that I keep getting, especially with new development that's going to be taking place in or in Quincy. There's possibly in that development going to be a shopping. We need to, we need to up the ante on the fines. And I'd like that to go to ordinance. So, it's my hope that SEMA, will come into compliance with their original commitment to the city. But at the same time, I'd like to, as I said, strengthen our existing ordinance covering shopping cards, create a further deterrent. It really is a serious quality of life issues. And, Mr. Timbers. So, I submit this tonight with the hope that I can be referred to the ordinance committee. And thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. Councillor Harris, a motion to move to ordinance, second on motion, seconded by.
Second on the.
And on the motion.
If I could just, I think it's a title that says it's a resolve on our agenda.
Oh, yeah.
It's an ordinance, so we're already asking for the ordinance.
Oh, it is, because I think it must be, because it says it's shopping.
Sorry, this is, anyway, it may amend, so it's, there's no issue, make sure this ordinance is passed, it's not.
Thank you, councillor Calmidge. And I know councillor, councillor Finn is here this evening. But for those council veterans, I think this was a copy of councillor Cofflin as well, and something that he also authored and attempted to fix during his tenure in the council. And so, I, you know, I just applaud councillor Harris, certainly something that jumps out in the back of your mind. Particularly those of us who sort of are, you know, dealing with shopping centers or cyber attacks. So, but just a shout to the past, to our council, too far in the past, and campus probably watching, but, but just a shout out to councillor Cofflin too, who tried to saying, as you, so with that, that will go to ordinance.
All those in favor, aye.
Oh, yeah. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Yeah, it's happening. That will end our formal agenda for this evening. At this point, I would ask those of you to take a look at the previous meeting minutes of June nineteenth and June twenty-sixth. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by councillor Leeang, seconded by councillor King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, that's not a mistake. Madam Park, communications and reports from there, and the state offices and state boards.
Thank you. I do have a few correspondence. I have a letter from school committee member Emily Lebo that was sent out on June twenty-third, also to the mayor and the other school committee members in regards to the school committee budget and finance on the capital improvement plan and public building inspection. We have it placed on file with the council under two thousand seventeen one thirty-two. It says, dear City Council President Hughes and City Council members, I understand that the city council did not have the opportunity to delve into the public question protection of the capital improvement plan in two thousand seventeen.
Do you have to put it into the, the agreement?
No.
Okay. We all did get a copy of it, I know, I know, I know, this is Lebo emailed, I run a copy of it myself. All right, placed on file.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, councillor Calmidge is asked to reference the humility you all received in July from Senator Keenan, center of marijuana law, chapter fifty-five, the act of two thousand seventeen, in act to ensure safe access to marijuana. Again, something that you've all received and councillor Calmidge, you have no one to do.
And ask that be referred to the oversight committee. That may or may not have been a response. I discussed with councillor Keenan, Senator Keenan, how the state law would affect the city host agreement and regulations that we have. I also have a letter that I believe is not, will be introduced as a communication to solicitor tenants who at some point will come before the council. Kind of give us an update as to what the state law, what impact the state law has on existing and proposed regulations in the city. And it is, you know, we have a, a few marijuana inspectors in the state, one of the first ones opened. We have a host, a very robust mitigation agreement in our host agreement with them. So, we make sure that that's not too damaged by the state. Refer that to the oversight committee, while the air is silent.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
Third is Crescent Street traffic petition. We, the residents of Crescent Street, signed the attached petition because we are extremely concerned about the traffic on Crescent Street. Please review the petition and join with us in requesting a way of moving the traffic and speed down Crescent Street twice a day without any regard to the safety of the residents. Thank you, corporation.
Thank you, Madam Park, councillor Calmidge.
If I may, I wonder what the clerk finished reading, and obviously not the names, what the petition was. I'd ask that that come in as a petition before the council be referred to Public Safety, Public Safety Committee. And that was sent and signed before we paved the street, not anything going faster.
It's a lot of water, yeah.
Yeah, our commercial. But, yeah, we could refer that to, to committee, Public Safety Committee will address that. Of course, traffic.
Thank you very much, councillor Calmidge. All right, thank you, Madam Park.
I also have three grants of locations to refer to the Public Works Committee for advertising. Verizon on Quincy Ave, relocate one pole on the north of the side of Quincy Ave to a new pole on the north of the side of Quincy Ave. The new pole is necessary to allow a driveway, the new development. Verizon and Mass Electric, Newberry Ave, place one pole on the north west of the side of Newberry Ave, three hundred and forty-six feet northwest of Swan Street. And Mass Electric, National Grid, Walnut Street, to install a new pole to serve a new building on one thirty-three Hancock Street. These will be referred to Public Works Committee for advertising and others notices with potential for public hearings.
Okay. Two hundred. Schedule of committee, so those are having a thing with us.
Thank you. And I also have traffic requests to refer to ordinance committee for advertising. Ward one, councillor Lefarge, to remove handicap parking at sixty-five Golden Street. Ward two, councillor Crowe, remove handicap parking at forty-eight Endipot Street. Ward four, councillor Calmidge, remove handicap parking at one forty-six Independence Ave. And ward five, councillor Hughes, add handicap parking to ninety-two Old Coliseum.
Okay, so we refer those to ordinance for active.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Madam Park. And I know the city clerk is very busy at work getting ready for the next two weeks. I just wanted to thank her and her team for those efforts. So, thank you very much, Madam Park. We all thank you too. Unfinished business and exceeding meeting. Reports of committees? Presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. Okay.
Well, tonight, tonight I was questioned by a line of debate about, in my ward of Verizon, there's been a noticeable increase in the amount of utility lines that have been left unattached or dismantled and disarrayed in utility poles. Whereas these utility lines are hap- haphazardly wrapped around the poles and left in excessive lengths along sidewalks or streets. Whereas these lines are left unattended several months and more. Whereas they have not only unsightly, but posed safety concerns to our residents. Therefore, be it resolved that the Public Works Committee hold a meeting with representatives of Verizon, National Grid, the Department of Public Works to identify these unattended utility line locations and create a protocol going forward that would address them in a timely manner. I want hearings on this issue. Planning simple.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Harris. So, councillor, so you got a proper resolve?
It's just.
Okay, it was a remonstrance. Got it. Okay. Councillor Lefarge.
Okay. I just wanted to express our condolences on the passing of Steve Moynihan, who's recently passed away. Great Quincy citizen, whose family's been very committed, who left Quincy High School, class of nineteen forty-eight, elected to the football hall of fame. He was a CPA in tax business, he was the director of business affairs for Quincy Public Schools, and was a participant beyond his community involvement. He was the founder of the Quincy Retiree Association and the treasurer of the Quincy Retired Teachers Scholarship Fund. A longtime member and past president of Mass Association of School Business Officials, worked at Quincy Knights Club of Angels, past president of Quincy Teen Mothers, and many other organizations. So, Mike Watson, friends, and with Jane, makes every morning have a family, have a passion of speed.
Thank you, councillor Cofflin. In, in closing on this particular section of the evening, I just want to give folks the opportunity to know. Once again, I know we all know here, but the mayor is inviting our community to a fundraiser for the folks of Houston. And he is pledging fifty thousand dollars from his annual charity golf tournament. And is challenging us as a city to help match that donation. So, this Thursday, September seventh, from six to eight, at the Zep Zeketti and Rob are at fourteen seventy-two Hancock Street. There'll be entertainment, food, and we want to thank always, as always, a big supporter of our community, of the council, and of those in need, Leo, we can't forget for agreeing to do this with our mayor. And thank the mayor for his leadership and his incredible compassion, you know, to extend our hand and the city's hand and his own hand to those in Houston. So, as somebody with family there, it means great deal. So, thank the mayor and ask all of you to attend or donate or do whatever you can in your own way or to this particular event. So, all right, with that, motions, orders or resolutions? Okay, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Councillor World, I think.
Hello, Madam President, so.
First of all, congratulations, councillor World, earning a quarter for your new baby. Just give us a little tuck, 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 tell the world.
Credit for these goes, goes all to my wife. How she grew and delivered a ten pound, three ounce baby is beyond, beyond me. But girl, family's expanding, two boys, everyone as well, everyone as well. So, thank you. Now, some numbers.
Yes.
So, you know, and again, I want to commend the finance committee for their work in the last council session. We were in this room, so much so that I felt like it was almost like it was my second home. So, we had a lot of deliberation, we asked a lot of questions, we had a lot of late nights. And I know that, you know, it's, it's time spent, you know, doing our job in behalf of the taxidermist. So, that being said, we have had a capital improvement plan pending, as promised last council session. You know, my commitment to folks was to schedule some hearings. So, what I'm partying for in terms of public hearing would be, and I'll work through this mechanically with Mr. Walker offline. But if you just want to flag it, next city council meeting. if you just want to flag it, next city council meeting was at the, that's the eighteenth, so if we came in here at six thirty, obviously agenda dependent, what it looked like that night, but we could at least start at six thirty with some, all the commentary, and then, you know, I'm just trying to stagger it, because obviously folks got a lot going on outside of, you know, the general session here, but that week, there is no planning board and zoning board, we're told, so, potentially, or we could lock it in the twentieth, which would be a Wednesday, we could be back in here and pick up the discussion on the capital improvement plan at six thirty, so you have the public hearing on the night of the city council meeting, maximize folks' time when they come here, and then, you know, a formalized Finance Committee meeting on the twentieth, maybe at six thirty, continue working, so, that's about as staying coming into meeting.
Okay, thanks, Council Crowell.
And I'll reach out to everyone on a separate cover with, or Susan, as I can share with you, to kind of recycle some of the material that was presented to us, and again, to use this time between now and when we start debating it, you know, ask some questions, you know, request information, however, whatever you need, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further scheduling of committee meetings or public hearings. Okay, at this time, I would entertain motion, motion, all those in favor?
Aye.